Well, welcome everybody and it is nice to see some faces. We as trainers really appreciate that, so we're not talking out into a black abyss. And it's also nice to see some of you, we didn't scare you away, you came on back for yet another module. So some of this will be a little bit of a recap for those of you who have been with us in other sessions. But we'll try and keep that to a minimum and then there's a lot of brand new information to break to you. So this is one of a series of live and recorded training modules. Some of you who have been in our others know that Module one was our roles and responsibilities. Module two was PHA budget and finance. We also have a procurement module and then a PHA performance monitoring and risk management module. And this is our PHA capital fund and strategic planning module. There's also three recorded training modules that will be coming out later this summer. And those will be on the low income public housing program in general and the admissions and continuous continuous occupancy plan. A second one on the HCV program and the administrative plan. And then final one on North Carolina and South Carolina public housing laws. This training was actually originally requested by the North Carolina and South Carolina field offices. And hence the reason for a little bit of focus in that area, but we welcome any of you from the southern region. And those of you who've been with me before, I know that I'm Margaret McGilvery from Econometrica. And we're an organization that provides technical assistance and training to public housing authorities around the country. And who has been hired by HUD to provide this training to you all. And I am joined by, sorry, I did the, didn't turn my cell phone off. And I'm joined by my colleague Dennis Mobley, who resides in Chattanooga, who you can see by his lovely background. The view out his window and has been working with PHAs for roughly 40 years. So he's got me beat by a few years because I've been in the field for about 25. So on to our learning objectives. So as in the other modules, oh Jennifer, there we go. These are what we hope that you will learn today. And so it's a good cross check for you to check for us and for us to check for ourselves. To make sure that we've actually provided the information that we thought we were providing. And for this one, we're hoping that at the end of all of this, you can really understand your role in the PHA plan as well as the capital fund plan. And perhaps give you some ideas for strategic planning going forward and appreciate more about the significance of these plans for your housing authority. And the agenda for today, if you'll move on to the agenda, thanks. We'll do a very quick public housing recap. And then we'll get into the PHA plan or the public housing agency plan. Then Dennis will talk to you about the capital fund plans. And then I'll end with a little bit of chat about strategic planning. So it's a pretty straightforward agenda. As we've done in our other, we like to know who's in the room. So we have a poll here. If you will answer, pick the description that best fits your PHA. Then we have a second question, have you ever reviewed a PHA plan, capital fund plan or or action, five year action plan? And have you already taken our public housing, one of our modules that included the public housing basics section? So we'll give you a few minutes to walk that through.
Okay, people are starting to vote or not vote, provide their answers to the poll, we appreciate it. And even if you've answered this for another session, please answer today so we can just make sure we're on the same page here. We've got over half of people who've responded to the poll, but people are still chiming in. So I'll give you another couple of seconds here. All right. I'm going to end the poll now and here's the result.
Okay, so we do have, so we do have some mostly public housing only PHAs, so, so the mention, which will be brief of HCV will not be as relevant to you, but that's okay. And good to know that you at least know what the PHA plan and capital fund plan is because you have in fact reviewed one. And we've kind of got a half and half of folks that are back to us and folks that are new. So we will go through our public housing recap, but we'll do it pretty quickly. So for those of you who have been with us, just hang tight for a couple of slides and then then we'll be on to the new information. If you can move us forward, Jennifer, to slide five, that would be great. So we'd just like to give a quick highlight of what is public housing? What is the Housing Choice Voucher Program? So everybody's got that base information and understanding. And the public housing programs were started in 1937 with the U.S. Housing Act. And there have been a number of changes since that time through an assortment of different acts that have added different programs, such as the Housing Choice Voucher Program and such. And more recently, they added in 1998, operating fund and officially formally added the capital fund, which had some variations at different points in time. Dennis will go into that in a little bit further and established what's called the asset management model. There are about 1.2 million public housing units across 3,000 public housing agencies across the country. So there's a lot of board folks just like you all across the country who are trying to figure out this very complicated set of programs and guide their organization as best they can. So public housing overall is, is designed to provide decent, safe and sanitary housing to low income residents. And low income in the case of public housing is defined as 80% of median income. Although there is a focus on 50% of median income as well. So housing authorities eligibility is based on a family or an individual's annual gross income, whether they're elderly or disabled or a family and their citizenship and immigration status. Once a housing authority determines that they're eligible, then they can live in the actual public housing properties that are owned by the housing authority and funded by HUD. And the PHA is established by state law and state statutes. And HUD actually controls the property through the annual contributions contract. So it's a very complicated ownership structure that is oftentimes a little confusing to folks in terms of who, who really is this federal property, is this state property? It's sort of, it's technically your property, your PHA's property. But it has a lot of other players that weigh into that. The financing is basically, public housing financing comes in two pots. It comes in the operating fund as well as the capital fund. And that's what we'll be focusing on today is the capital fund as well as some special purpose grants. So there are other funding grants such as the family self sufficiency program. There are some safety and security grants and some other specialty grants. And then of course funded by income from the residents in terms of their rent. Rent is based on 30% of their median income. But there is also something called minimum rent. So that could be at $25 or higher and that's set specifically by the housing authority. Housing authorities also pay something called pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. And that's to whatever is the taxing authority for your community, whether that's the city or the county. And that is done through a cooperative agreement between that entity and your housing authority. And it's very important for board members to know what that cooperative agreement says because it is obligating yourselves and the authority to a certain amount of money paid to that entity. And then let me just see then, oh, lastly, let me just mention that PHAs are required to have a resident advisory board. And to the extent possible, based on funding, supportive services or resident services. They can get additional funding, funding through the family self sufficiency MSS program or the resident opportunities and self sufficiency grants, which are called Ross grants. As well as they are encouraged to encourage residents for establishing their own businesses or employment through the Section 3 program, which is not, does not have a funding source, but is basically just a requirement on housing authorities for them to make every effort to enable residents to have their own businesses and potentially contract or work with, work for or with the housing authority. So on to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. This too is a program designed to provide or to enable decent, safe and sanitary housing for low income families. However, this program is actually targeted more towards very low income families. As the cap, the income cap for this, for the Section 8 program is 50% of median income versus that 80% that I mentioned for public housing. And PHA is required to give 75% of their vouchers to those families or individuals at 30% of median income. So it really is a program that's targeted more towards the very low income. And it's, it's providing housing opportunities within the private marketplace. So folks receive a Housing Choice Voucher and that's administered by the house, the local housing authority, but paid for by HUD. And they take that out into the community, find an apartment and a landlord that's willing to take that voucher. And then the PHA pays a subsidy for that rent to the landlord directly. And then the tenant pays their portion of the rent as well. And then HUD also provides a second payment to the housing authority called the administrative fee that helps fund the actual operations of the Section 8 program. The housing subsidy, as I mentioned, is paid directly to the landlord and is based on what's called a payment standard, which is established by the housing authority. And is based basically on average rents within the community for moderately priced units. And then this helps, is used to then calculate how much subsidy they will pay that landlord. Residents pay the difference between the rent and/or that payment standard and that's being paid by the housing authority and 30% of their income. So they pay that, that difference directly to the landlord as well. And that is, and again, as I said, that's based on 30% of their, of their total annual gross income and family size comes into play there as well. Housing authorities receive what's called a budget authority. And that's their funding from HUD that is for paying those subsidies to the landlords. And they receive, that's also based on an assumption of a certain number of vouchers. So you may hear your housing authority refer to the fact that they have been allocated 100 vouchers. But it is and it isn't. So they've been allocated what is assumed to be 100 vouchers and the amount of money that would be necessary to fund those vouchers. However, if the tenant portions are a little bit different than anticipated, sometimes the housing authority may use up all of their budget authority or budget for Housing Choice vouchers, but not reach that 100 vouchers because each voucher costs a little bit more on the part of the housing authority because of how much the rents are as well as how much the, what portion the tenants are able to pay. So that's why you may see some, some differences there. On to the next slide. So lastly, we just wanted to give a good slide that kind of encapsulates all of the key documents that board members should have, have either access to or actually a copy of. And the top of the list is that annual contributions contract, which is actually the contract between the housing authority and HUD for that, for that funding. And like any contract, it basically has what HUD is obligated to do for the housing authority and what the housing authority is obligated to do back. And so that includes things like how you keep your finances, how you maintain your records. You know, how you, it mostly has to do with the financial side of things, but also conflict, not have, I'm sorry, compliance, not having a conference of interest, et cetera. And then it also lays out what HUD might do if there's non-compliance with or a breach of that annual contributions contract. And then the rest of the ones listed here will be going over later today. So the capital fund and the PHA plan and the capital fund plan. Then also your annual contribute, I'm sorry, your ACOP and your admin. Those are two enormous documents that, that are the policies, they're really the bibles for policy bibles for your public housing and your Housing Choice Voucher Programs. I wouldn't expect you to have a copy of those because they're enormous, but certainly there should be readily available so you can refer to them. And then some of the critical policies such as your procurement, your personnel, your finance and maybe some others. And then your bylaws and code of ethics. So these are just critical documents that any board member should have. So at this point, I'll just check if anybody has any questions before I launch into the PHA plan. So there are a couple of different PHA plans and it makes it a little bit confusing. There's a five year plan and there's an annual plan. And I'm going to take them one piece at a time. So we'll talk about the five year plan because that, every housing authority across the country has to do that plan. And that plan is, is at a fairly high level. And basically it's looking at the mission of the agency, the long-term goals and objectives for achieving that mission over a five-year period. And generally speaking, the approach to managing programs and providing services. So that's, it's, and we'll look at a sample of it, it's at a pretty high level. The PHA plan is at a high level. The, the strategic plan basically for the agency to help guide policies, programs, operations and strategies for meeting what are your local needs and goals. And we'll break that down in the next couple of slides. So the five-year plan is submitted every fifth year. And then you do an annual plan every year that may update or make slight modifications to that five-year plan. And that is a requirement by HUD to be submitted and also approved by HUD. So HUD takes a look at those plans and makes sure that you're not proposing something that's crazy or not allowed to be funded through public, public housing funds or whatever. And it also can serve as an application for other grants or other improvements to the authority. Next slide. So in 2008, the Housing and Economic Recovery Act made some changes to PHA plans to ease up on the requirements a little bit. And it created what was called qualified PHAs versus non-qualified PHAs. And the qualified PHAs, everybody still has to do the five-year plan. But the qualified PHAs don't have to do a full annual plan every year. They just have to do some certifications. But non-qualified PHAs have to do that annual plan every single year. So what's, what's a qualified, what's a non-qualified? PHA qualified is if the housing authority has a combined unit total of 550 or less public housing units and Section 8 vouchers. So for instance, if you have 250 public housing units and 250 Section 8 vouchers, then you would fall into that qualified category. However, if you had 250 public housing units and 1,000 Section 8 vouchers, you would not. It's not designated troubled within the last 12 months. And troubled is a, has to do with your public housing assessment score that HUD gives you or your Section 8 management assessment program score that HUD also gives you. And if it's below 60, then you're in the troubled category.
What is that called, the score?
It's called the FAS, which is Public Housing Assessment Score. FAS or the Section 8 Management Assessment Program or CMAP score. And actually, if you take module five, we get into both of those in depth. So if you are not troubled and you're in that smaller PHA category, then you're considered qualified and you only have to do light planning annually. If you are not in that category, you're non-qualified and you have to do an annual plan every year. On to the next slide. So this is just a quick snapshot of what the five-year plan, it's, it's a set plan in a form that's dictated by HUD. And this just gives you, you can't really read it here necessarily, but it just gives you a visual of what that looks like. And hopefully those of you, which I think we had like 70% of you have done approvals, you've seen this before. And so this is what your five-year plan looks like. Your staff will fill this out, but certainly there should be some consultation with the board in terms of, you know, what are our, what is our mission? Is our mission to just make the best public housing with our current stock that we have? Is it to maybe reposition our stock so that we have stronger finances for our long-term future? Maybe it's to develop additional affordable housing stock? These are all goals that the board can discuss and work out and be represented in this five-year plan. And so can we go to slide 12? Yeah, great, thank you. So just, this is a little bit just the process. Basically every five years, the PHA has to submit that five-year plan. It has to be submitted for the fiscal year, like for instance, if the fiscal year is, if your fiscal year is October 1, you would be, you would be submitting it for that year and the next five years. So that's the period of time. And then come back around again. Some of the other pieces to that plan, it needs to be consistent with your consolidated plan, which is something that your city or county develops and is actually part of the community development block grant process. So whomever in your area run, receives that community development block grant funding. And if your community doesn't receive that, then it's, it needs to be consistent with the state consolidated plan. And that's a signature on a certain form by that state or local official. So it also wants to make sure that if public housing is, you know, wanting to do a lot of developments, but the city is actually anti-development, you know, that we want those two parties to be talking so that you don't have missions or goals that are really in contradiction to, to each other. The PHA, the five-year PHA plan has to be made publicly available. So you have to have a public hearing 45 days prior to what, at least it needs to be out for 45 days for review. And then the public hearing is at the end of, or close to the end of that 45 day period. The residents need to weigh in on it and very specifically. So every housing authority has to create a resident advisory board. And that board can be made up of the heads of all your individual resident councils. It could be made up of people that just volunteer. It could be just done through an open meeting if you really can't gather set residents. But it has to be a specific, ideally a specific group of people from the residents that are representative and review and have a meeting that is specific to that PHA plan to review it and discuss it and comment on it because those comments actually have to be provided to HUD when, when the plan is submitted. So also the plan needs to take into consideration the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act prohibits housing providers from any kind of discrimination practices based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status or disability. And PHAs have to adhere to that as well, as well as have a secondary role in terms of wanting to affirmatively further fair housing. So not only are they not supposed to discriminate, but they're also supposed to be promoting fair housing. And so that may be, you know, making sure that none of their policies or procedures are discriminatory in any way, but also perhaps increasing folks, folks' housing choice. So if the housing authority is thinking about redeveloping properties, redevelop them in an area where there are better schools or less concentrated poverty and such. Or if you have a Housing Choice Voucher Program, being proactive in how you market to landlords in those greater opportunity neighborhoods, how you encourage people to consider other neighborhoods where the schools might be better and, and the resources might be better. So housing authorities have to be also watching out for increasing opportunities, which is, which is the, the particular phrase is affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a lot of Fs and is really, does not trip over your tongue. But that's an obligation of the housing authority as part of this planning process as well. So let's pull up a poll and give you guys a chance to see if I've been talking too much and if it's made sense. Next slide, Jennifer. Next slide, Jennifer. And I think this has a poll. Yes, great. So can only non-qualified PHAs must submit a five-year plan? Is that true or false?
Okay, we've got about half of people have answered the poll. Let's give them another few seconds.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got about 71% of people have voted. So let's go ahead and end the poll and see where we're at.
All right, those of you who said false, you are correct. So all PHAs have to submit a five-year PHA plan. The qualified versus non-qualified has to do with the annual plan submission. So good for those 80% of you. Onto our next slide. So now we'll talk just briefly about the annual plan. So this is more of just a slide like the other one to show you what does the front page of the annual plan look like. And there's actually, if you see, this is HUD Form like 4226 or something. And there's like 4266, 26SE, a whole bunch of different variations. And so this one you can see says for standard and troubled PHAs. There's another one for high performing. There's another one for like small. There's a bunch of variations on this theme, but they all pretty much look very similar to this. So this is what you should see annually if you are in fact a non-qualified PHA. Next slide. And that PHA plan, this looks like a lot of items. It's not too bad, but there are 19 items that you go through on your annual plan. And it starts out with a statement of housing needs. Now, the housing authority fills out all of this information. There could be discussions with the board. And ultimately, the board reviews it and determines whether they agree with it or would want to change things. But the housing authority staff is who puts this together. But it's great because it does start out with that, where are our housing needs? And that should help drive some of your decisions in here. So for instance, some of the other categories is rent determination and policies. So that is where particularly for your housing choice voucher program, you can decide whether you're setting your payment standards at the low, there's a range in which you can set payment standards. And that's a policy decision that the board can make. So that should be included and considered as part of this annual plan. Or for instance, homeownership programs. You can fund homeownership programs through your housing choice voucher program. Do you want to do that? Maybe not. Demolition and disposition. That's where you talk about whether, you know, one of your properties is in such bad shape that you want to demolish it. So, you know, that's part of that discussion. Some of these, such as like pet ownership, that's where you get into that administrative and continuous occupancy policy and you decide, you know, do we want only 25-pound dogs? Or are we going to allow 50-pound dogs? So there are some of these elements that are very global in how you view and make choices. Some of them are down in the weeds of your policies. But your annual plan covers a lot of territory. Many of these categories, or I shouldn't say many. Some of these categories get incorporated into that ACOG or that admin plan. And some of them are more global in terms of like demolition and disposition. Next slide. So this just revisits that, what do you have to do if you are qualified PHA versus annually versus a non-qualified PHA? If you're a non-qualified PHA, you have to go through that entire annual plan form. You have to complete all of the forms. You have to get certificates from the consolidated plan, civil rights, have that annual hearing, have the RAB consult, the resident advisory board consult, and then submit it 75 days before the end of the fiscal year. When it comes to, when it comes to qualified PHAs, that's a little bit easier. You basically just have to submit your certifications. So you have to submit your civil rights. You have to submit your certification with the consolidated plan. You have to basically say, we're not going to change our five-year plan at all. And that's what you make publicly available and you have a public hearing on that. So you still have to have that public hearing and you still have to submit some forms, that 75 days before the end of the fiscal year. But it's, you don't have to go through all those 19 items that you saw on that prior slide. So let's go to our next, well, let me actually open it up for questions real quickly.
Yeah, you did have a question on what do the civil rights certifications actually look like?
It's an entire form. I could dig up what the number of that form is. But basically, it says, you know, that you adhere to all of the Civil Rights Acts in terms of, you know, discrimination and all of the statements within the Civil Rights Acts. And any other, any other questions? And I can get, I'll get that form number for you. Any other questions? Okay, let's pull up a poll then, Jennifer. Okay, so qualified PHAs are required to conduct an annual public hearing and consult with the RAB on their PHA plan. Is this true or false?
Okay, we've got about 50% of people have answered this question. Got a couple more trickling in. Okay, 64%. All right, then I'm going to end the poll now and share the results with you.
Okay, so those of you who said yes, true, that is in fact the case. So both qualified and unqualified PHAs have to have a public hearing around their PHA plan annually. The, what the qualified folks get off the hook of is filling out all of the 19 elements of an annual plan. But in terms of that public hearing, you do have to have that annually. So that's your difference. Onto Slide 18. So just to wind up our PHA plan section, the role of the board is, in one sense, fairly simple when it comes to the PHA plan. It's basically around the strategic direction. You know, do you want to focus on decent, safe, and sanitary housing and sort of status quo? Or do you want to focus on mobility or homeownership or redevelopment? It's very simple mission, simple, basic goals. But it is the role of the board to provide that direction to your agency and your ED. Again, the staff puts the whole plan together, but hopefully, they do have those strategic conversations with the board prior to doing so so that they can follow that theme, whatever kind of theme you set, and establish that through the plan. And then ultimately, you review and comment on and hopefully approve the plan through resolution in your board meeting. Next slide. In terms of the residents, the residents actually have a bigger role or as big a role as the PHA, as the board, in the plan. Because they get to actually also comment on all of the elements of it. And they have a specific meeting to discuss if there are any issues within it that they don't agree with. And that includes looking at those ACOGS and admin plans annually as well. And so the residents have a huge role in really reviewing that document and determining whether they agree with it. At the end, even if they disagree with it, the housing authority doesn't have to change it to the way that the residents want it. But the residents' comments have to be included with that submission. And usually, there needs to be justification for why the housing authority hasn't, hasn't, you know, made any changes as a result of those comments. Maybe the comments weren't really on the PHA plan or something, but in some cases, it also may be that the residents want the housing authority to do something that quite frankly, funding just won't allow. So, but you want them to be able to comment and the housing authority justify, you know, how they are dealing with those comments. And again, as I mentioned earlier, it can be, your resident advisory board can be a jurisdiction-wide resident council. It could be a representative from all of the local resident councils or in the off-case that no resident kind of entity exists, that you basically just, you either encourage them to create a council just for this purpose or you just pick some resident advisory board members to the best extent possible and have them act in that function. So before I turn it over to Dennis to go over the capital fund and the plans associated with that, I'll field any last minute questions on the PHA plan. Okay, then Dennis, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to talk about the capital fund. Before we do that, I want to offer you greetings from the North Shore of Chattanooga, Tennessee. And Margaret and Jennifer are maybe speaking to you from Raleigh at sunrise or Columbia at sunset. But I wasn't able to figure out how to get my virtual HUD background up for this morning. So this is where I get to live. I'm just off to the west of all of you guys. I want to also offer a confession, Margaret McGilvray, that if you count my internship at the Housing Authority of Baltimore City in 1972, this is actually my 50th year working in and around public housing. I learned many years ago that for some of us, it kind of gets in your blood. I didn't intend to work in this industry when I started 50 years ago. I needed a job. And the housing authority had a job up in Baltimore and I took it. And 50 years later, I'm still working with guys and gals like you. So I want to offer on behalf of Margaret and Jennifer, our thanks to you in this class for your service, for you being willing to be a public housing agency commissioner. And you join the ranks of thousands of citizens who have also said yes to their mayor when he or she asked them to serve on the board of the housing authority. So capital fund, again, I go way back, not all the way to the Housing Act of 1937, but I can say that when, from that date, the rents that your agencies have been allowed to charge and the operating subsidies that your agencies have been given by HUD have been designed to cover basically the operations of the public housing at your disposal. We could argue for hours and days how inadequate those subsidies may be. But let me say on the capital side that it wasn't until the 1960s when HUD had on its hands, you know, some housing that was 30 years old, some that was 25 years old. They began to notice two things. One, many of the roofs that were originally built were beginning to fail. They were noticing that many of the windows that were installed, I mean, you know, some of you might have World War II era housing stock. Some of the windows that were installed back then, you couldn't get parts to repair them anymore. So something needed to be done. Not to mention that much of the early housing was built to 1930s designs, including clawfoot bathtubs with no showers, kitchens with no doors on the shelving. And so HUD in the 1960s created something that at the time it called the Modernization Program. Well, that program has evolved through the years. And so fast forward to the present day and we call it the Capital Fund Program. And essentially, that flow of funding every year is designed to deal with, you know, as I said before, when a single window breaks, you know, you would tend to take care of that through your operating budget. But when a number of windows aren't working properly because the parts, the original parts have worn out or again, the roofs throughout, you know, are beginning to leak, those are capital activities. And so that's what the capital fund and all of its predecessors was intended for. Now, through the years, HUD has gotten, and Congress has gotten pretty global in terms of their aspirations for a capital fund activity. So they basically tell you, you can do development of public housing with your capital fund. You can use it, you can actually borrow on your flow of capital funds. So that's a financing activity. Yes, you can modernize stuff. You can even do what are called management improvements where you can invest in data systems, in training, in other initiatives aimed at increasing your capacity to deliver your services. Safety and security measures, we're going to talk about that in a little more detail. Homeownership activities, improvement of energy and water use efficiencies. All of those are eligible activities. I'm going to be frank with you. For most of you, the flow of capital funds you are receiving is probably not even adequate to take care of the capital of your housing in its current condition. But there are ways to get there from here. Jason is asking how, that would be another whole three-day seminar. But we're available to go further into detail. Yes, the capital fund is an annual payment to the housing authority. There will actually be an annual amendment to your annual contributions contract that will reflect the amount of capital funds that you're going to be receiving that year. Somewhere along the line, Congress thought that it would be nice to offer you the flexibility to siphon some of this capital money off and put it in your operating budget to supplement your operating subsidy. They put a cap of no more than 20% for operating expenses. They do allow you to charge some staff time. They do allow you to charge some staff time. If you're a smaller agency, it's probably going to be your executive director, maybe your lead maintenance person. If you're a slightly larger agency, you might even have staff that spend all or a portion of their time on the capital fund program. You can charge up to 10% for admin. And I mentioned the management improvements, they cap those at 10%. So my cautionary note to you here is, even though on this slide it says you can spend 40% of your capital funds on non-capital activities, we like to sort of caution you to say, your bricks and mortar needs are probably pretty extensive. Be very rigorous in terms of how you all guide the staff when they propose your annual capital fund, annual statement and budget. All right, so ineligible activities. We said you can do a whole lot in theory with your capital funds. You may not spend them on activities that are not related to public housing. You may not spend them on activities that are not reflected in that five-year action plan that we discussed. You are supposed to only spend money to a quote-unquote modest design. Again, don't use capital funds to benefit other programs. All or most of you don't run a housing choice voucher program. If you did, don't intermingle those. Don't duplicate funding you've already got. The soft costs, that is non-bricks-and-mortar, don't spend soft costs unless it in fact upgrades or improves the operation or management of your public housing program. Okay, I'm going to basically give you the short answer on this. In the old days, larger agencies, including some in both of your states and other states, wanted to spend a whole bunch of capital money on vehicles and they wanted to hire bunches of security guards. The answer is don't. This is a capital program and those kinds of activities frankly are considered operating expenses. Let's go to the next slide. All right, we're going to do a little quiz, even though we're only a few slides in, which activity is not allowed under the capital fund program? Can you renovate one of your public housing sites? Can you install energy-efficient windows? Can you pay capital fund staff salaries? Can you purchase a van for resident service activities? Can you buy software for financial upgrade based on audit recommendations?
And the key here is, the answer is which one you can't do.
Right. And do we throw trick questions at you? Of course we do. Which activity is not allowed under the capital fund program?
Okay, people are trying to chime in here, so give you all a few, a little more time. About half of the folks have voted. Anybody else want to take a stab here? Okay. Okay, we got about 64% of folks that answered this question, so I will go ahead and end the poll and share this with you.
And those of you that answered purchasing a van for resident services activities, you are correct. You can pay capital fund personnel staff salary. So again, if your ED is spending, you know, 28% of his or her time and there, you know, he or she's done a little study to justify that 28%, you can charge to the capital fund for administration, provided you don't exceed the 10% cap. You can buy software for a financial software upgrade, particularly if your auditor has recommended that, or even if you or the staff together have decided, maybe even with some resident input, have decided that's a good investment. So nice job, this is a lot to absorb in a little bit of time, and let's move on. All right, so one of the things that's different with capital funds as opposed to the operating fund is, as your operating subsidies come in through the year, if you don't happen to spend them in the fiscal year to which they belong, there's no real harm there, they will simply be part of a surplus and will go into reserves at the end of your fiscal year. Capital funds, on the other hand, has a deadline. We say that you are required to obligate 90% or more of your authorized capital fund grant, and you must do so within 24 months from the obligation start date. So what do we mean by obligate? Well, normally, because these are capital investments, meaning, you know, new roofs, let's say, new windows, new HVAC, air conditioning condensers, perhaps new flooring, new kitchen cabinet, this kind of work will typically be done by contractors. And so the quickest and easiest way that you obligate your capital funds is you award a contract for a certain work item within your capital fund annual statement or five-year action plan. And that's what we mean by obligate. Now, for those administrative line items or the management improvements, obligation is basically when you begin to spend against those budget line items. Now, there's also a requirement to expend the capital funds within a certain period of time. That means literally, your accounting department will write the check, either to pay that contractor for the new roofs, or to be included in the payroll for a certain period that includes some staff salary and benefits. And you get 48 months from when the clock starts. Now, the clock typically starts for each year's capital fund grant when the annual contributions contract ACC amendment is signed, or it's around that time. HUD each year will kind of give you a date and they will say, this is the obligation start date for your 2019 capital fund, your 2020 capital fund grant, 2021, and so forth. Now, if you don't hit your 90% obligation, you're going to be penalized in the following year. You're going to lose 1/12 of future capital funds for each month of non-compliance. They're going to, they're going to assess that against a future grant if you fail, let's say, for your 2019 capital funds. Your 2019 capital fund programs will probably have obligation dates of sometime this year. And therefore, you guys as board members, if you don't know already, want to check with the staff and say, how are we doing against our obligation targets? And so what happens is, and then if there's unexpended capital fund grants four years out, HUD will recapture those. They will not, you know, they will ding your future capital fund grant if you miss on your obligation deadlines. So we're going to, we're going to kind of crunch the numbers on this because it's really important. Yeah, let's go to slide 26. All right, so let's suppose that you have, for your 2019 program, you had an obligation end date. This would be for your 2017 program, an obligation end date of July 10, 2019. What if you didn't achieve the 90% obligation threshold until October the 12, 2019? That is July, August, September, October, that's three months and two days after the July 10 deadline. What happens? Well, you're going to be penalized for four months' worth of grant monies on the following year, in this case, the 2020 capital fund formula grant. So let's play that out to its very ugly conclusion with the next slide. Let's suppose you get a formula grant of $360,000 per year, that happens to come out to $30,000 per month. If they're going to ding you for four months' worth of grant because you were three months and two days late, that's going to be 30,000 times four months equals 120,000. So it's going to be a very unhappy fiscal year 2020 program. Instead of the 360 that you would be accustomed to, it's only going to be 240. HUD will execute a new ACC amendment. They're going to reflect that $120,000 penalty. And that's even going to be a deduction on your public housing assessment system grade, your FAS grade. Getting into issues on timely obligation and expenditure is in fact going to cost you some points. And the max, of course, is for any one year, they can't take more than 100% of the subsequent year's grant. All right, so a quick quiz here. 90% of all of a given capital fund award must be obligated within 24 months of grant awarded and 100% expended within 48 months, true or false? We need the final Jeopardy music playing, I think, at some point, Jennifer.
Don't make me sing, Dennis.
You probably all hear it in your head as you're answering this question.
All right, so about 70% of folks have given an answer, so I'll go ahead and end this poll and share it with everybody.
And the answer is true. In a nutshell, 90% must be obligated within 24 months, 100% expended within 48 months. And so now you guys know, as board members, this is one metric that you're going to want to be following really throughout every fiscal year because, you know, this is big doings if the staff is not able to comply with these requirements. All right, so we're trying to link the capital fund program to, you know, the planning process similar to the PHA plan process. There is a capital fund planning process. Some years ago, these were actually linked. And so you could do all of your PHA planning and your capital fund planning, discuss it with the residents and the public all at the same time. Frankly, I loved that approach and I regret that we've walked away from that. So key components of the capital fund planning process is, you want to be knowing what the needs are of the housing to which you are entrusted. We have acronyms for this, of course, we have acronyms for everything. So we talk about PNA's or physical needs assessments, or perhaps we call them capital needs assessments. But really, you know, what it's aimed at is the roofs that we've talked about. If roofs have, let's say, a 20-year useful life and you guys find out that your roofs are 10 years old, you really want to know that 10 years out, you've got a very good chance of financing roof replacement when those roofs wear out. And related to that, HUD is encouraging you to conduct an energy audit. Now typically, you know, you will procure outside technical assistance for this. And it is a good idea to have outside technical experts come in every few years to perform a PNA or CNA. And then the next step is, you know, that may well be a very large number, particularly if you're looking at your capital needs over, I recommend a 20-year horizon. Then what you do next is, you figure out, well, what can we afford to do over the next five years? So with the five-year action plan, you're going to take your most recent capital fund grant and just assume that that's what, you know, year two, three, four, and five is going to look like. You are required to provide a 45-day notice to the public and to your residents that a draft plan, yes, outside experts can be paid for with capital funds, we can delve into that in more detail a little bit later. I saw that question pop up. You have to provide a 45-day notice that your draft five-year action plan and annual statements are available, that there will be a public hearing. Then the board will be required to actually approve the five-year action plan by resolution. And at the same time, there is a requirement for what's called environmental reviews. These are typically conducted by your locality with input from your staff. And let's look at that next slide. So capital needs assessments, in this case, we're using CNA. They are not required by HUD, which I think is frankly unfortunate. I think all owners and operators of multifamily real estate, such as yourselves, should be looking at your capital needs annually. If you have a professional come in and do a CNA or PNA, then, you know, every so often to bring those fresh eyes to the mix, what you guys as board and staff and residents should be doing is every year, you're kind of looking to see how those needs may evolve over time. Essentially, you're considering what work is needed to bring each of your amps, your asset management projects, that's our fancy name for your developments, your complexes, to applicable modernization and energy conservation standards. Again, we recommend that this formally be done every five to 10 years. I recommend, you know, outside technical assistance unless you're a really huge staff like we had at Baltimore back in the day. Conduct or procure energy audits every so often. And all of this information feeds into the development of the five-year action plan and the other annual capital fund program submission docs that HUD requires, annual statement being one. So again, I think you're going to find that when you look at your overall capital needs, that's going to be a larger number, certainly than your annual grant. It may be a larger number than you can even address over a multi-year period. It may be a larger number than you can even address over a multi-year period. But you got to start with knowing what that number is. Okay, next slide. So we'd like to show you snippets of the various forms. In some ways, we make the type so small that you really, you guys as board members can't, you know, obsess on the details because you're not supposed to. But what these forms do is they show by budget line item for year one, for example, let's say we're putting together your 2022 capital fund program. That would be year one on your five-year action plan. Then there are columns for '23, '24, '25, and '26. And so these forms, five-year action plan, basically gives you as the policymakers, the staff, and the residents, a snapshot of what it is you intend to get done over the next five years. Next slide. What are some of the other requirements? That you hold a public hearing regarding the proposed capital fund submission. That you meet and consult with your resident advisory board. The board must approve via resolution the package before it gets submitted to HUD. And HUD is not going to let you access those funds until the board resolution is passed and HUD declares your submittal to be in good order. I want to put in a plug, and I think Jason, you were beginning to allude to this. Meet and consult with the resident advisory board. I'm going to predict that for most of you, the problem is not that you have too many over-opinionated residents who don't know what the hell they're talking about. I'm going to guess the problem is the opposite. You hold a public hearing and nobody shows up. So what you're dealing with perhaps is resident apathy. And one of the possible ways to get past this is I have seen committee systems work very well at housing authorities of all sizes where, let's stick with capital fund for the moment. This capital planning process that we're talking about, what if you could talk some residents to, sitting with you and the staff? You guys as commissioners need to be careful. You're not supposed to be micromanaging the agency. So I might envision one member of the board being on the Housing Authority Capital Planning Committee along with pertinent staff and as many resident reps as you can talk into attending. I might even be crazy enough to say a monthly meeting where you go over how the program is doing, what is, what are the contracts that have been awarded? How are we doing against our obligation deadlines, our expenditure deadlines? How are we doing in terms of trying to take that big number and chip away at it through our smaller annual grants? I have learned in half-century of working with residents that when you respect their intelligence and their commitment, if you can talk them into coming to these meetings, you will find that they are valuable members of the process. They will become advocates for you if you're not insulting their intelligence, treating them as peers, filling them in on the issues you're grappling with. And you will be amazed at the kind of input that you get. That's my editorial statement. Let's go to the next slide. Monitoring capital fund performance. What are the strategies that you should be putting in place to monitor compliance with your capital fund program? Review the five-year plan annually to confirm that it aligns with your PHA goals. And again, monthly tracking of obligations and expenditures is really important for reasons that you saw. Reviewing and budgeting for plan modifications throughout the year. There will be surprises that spring up. There will be emergencies that crop up. You will have to call audibles at the line of scrimmage and make some budget amendments. And you want to evaluate, again, your procurement timeliness and effectiveness and to assure yourselves that your contracts are being awarded and monitored professionally, fairly in light of the principle of full and open competition for capital fund awards and for fair and open treatment once they're under contract. And let's go, we'll do a knowledge check. And then I would like to sort of invite, I know we've had a number of questions. I see 12 chats here, so we'll do our best. Which of the following are requirements of the capital fund planning process? Note all that apply. Note that we are very tricky trainers and yes, this is a trick question. Are environmental reviews a requirement? Is a 90-day notice of the plan a requirement? Public hearing and RAB consultation? Must we coordinate this with the PHA plan? And must we think about our capital needs?
Okay, Dennis, I've got to have an open poll, so people can start to answer when they're ready.
And this is multiple choice, so you can pick all that apply.
Hey, people are contemplating the possibilities here. So we'll give them a few more seconds to review and think about this. Okay, about half the folks have responded. So I think we'll just go ahead and wrap this up and I'll share the results so far.
All right, well, so the trickiness is it's a 45-day notice, not 90. But, you know, obviously, that's just a little something us trying to be sneaky snakes. Everything else, as you have noted, is applicable to the capital fund planning process. And thankfully, it's not a 90-day notice, it's a 45-day notice. And it's still going to be a ton of work getting your draft annual statement and five-year action plans ready 45 days upstream from the public hearing. I do see that Margaret has been answering most of the chats.
I'll also mention that, so the answer, correct answers were A, C, and E because the 45-day notice, but also it is not done with PHA.
Oh, you're even trying to trick me? Who remembers the way that it used to be done?
Yes, yes, so.
I'm going to say conceptually, how the heck do you do a capital fund program without some reference back to the PHA plan? But technically, yes, you are correct that it is A, C, and E.
And just to put some context in that, unfortunately, the PHA plan is less around your funding source. So the fact that frequently, unfortunately, Congress does not appropriate the funding in sync with the fiscal years. So part of the reason why HUD disconnected the PHA plan from the capital fund plan is because in order to really do effective capital fund planning, it's useful to know how much funding you're going to get. And so that information is oftentimes not known until well into the fiscal year. So that's part of the reason why they made the disconnect is because the PHA plan doesn't rely so much, although conceptually it does, on precise funding, whereas the capital fund plan does rely on that funding number a bit more.
And to which I will say, yeah, yeah, but that's an editorial comment. All right, so we got a question. How do you guys as board commissioners manage the capital fund program without usurping the responsibilities of the executive director? And I think the answer is you are not to manage the program. That is up to the staff. But the overall oversight of the program, you know, I think as board members, this is your second-largest source of funds coming in each year. And you really do want to have some influence over that. So, you know, it's going to be a more global, a more occasional input into the process. And it's part of the delicate dance that you will do as commissioners. If you give a darn, you really do want to get somewhat into the weeds. But you got to be careful that you're really overstepping the bounds of a commissioner. So I appreciate that question and that's the best I can do on an answer. The funds come from HUD directly based on the congressional appropriation for each fiscal year. So again, you'll get an annual amendment to your annual contributions contract that reflects the amount of your latest capital fund grant. Any other questions that you want to put on the table real fast here?
And we'll pick up additional questions at the end. Just in interest of getting through all of the content for those that may have to depart sooner, then we can field all questions, any other additional questions at the end.
All right, so Margaret, with that, I'm going to throw it back to you.
Okay, and if Jennifer, you can move on to the next slide. So after speaking about the detailed HUD-prescribed plans of the PHA plan and the capital fund plan and budget, we wanted to just put that in a slightly more strategic context in the next few slides. And so although HUD doesn't require an official strategic plan and the PHA plan can to some extent be considered, well, the PHA plan in concert with the capital fund can be considered a strategic plan, we just wanted to talk a little bit about strategic planning in general. And this can be done in the context of these other two required HUD plans or on its own sort of, on its own sort of channel. And in general, strategic plans is an opportunity for the organization to come together and set priorities, focus energy and resources, and strengthen operations. So this is something that we actually do encourage the board to undertake on an annual basis with staff so that you really are making sure that your agency is not only running well, it's not your role as a compliance or overseer, but also that you are actually providing that direction and thoughts and insight. And so looking at, starting with assessing the affordable housing needs in the community. And that's something that your housing authority has to do as part of the PHA plan and has easy data sources enabled to do it at least at a basic level. And then looking at your resources, you know, housing authorities don't, most of their funding comes from HUD. So their resources are pretty well set. And so making sure that your goal setting and your strategies are within those confines is very important as well. And then looking at policies and procedures, both from what HUD requires as well as where you have some latitude. So we'd like to, we wanted to sort of walk through kind of a little bit of the scenario in the next couple of slides and just enable the board to think about the types of questions that you might ask from a strategic perspective when planning. So do you want to, and I've touched on a number of them in the prior discussion. So for instance, do you want to increase your housing to the elderly and disabled? If so, then that might mean that you're changing your waitlist policy to prioritize that population. Or it may also mean that you want to convert one of your family properties into an elderly property or bring in a new elderly property. Or do you maybe want to encourage homeownership among your families? And if so, do you want the board, the board want the PHA to investigate and potentially establish a homeownership program through single-family, acquisition of single-family homes? So these are just some samples of the type of discussions that might you might want to undertake as your board as part of strategic planning slash the PHA process. And this is just a good, if you can go on to the next slide, Jennifer. This is just a good slide that's, oh, one back, sorry. This is what a strategic plan is made up, composed, comprised of. The mission, vision, then your housing needs, finances, and goals and strategies, as I just discussed. Now on to the next slide. So this was to break it down a little bit. This is where we get into a slight scenario. So this is more to sort of show the exercise that you as a board could undertake. So looking at some of the useful data points that I referenced in terms of both your housing needs as well as your community makeup. So in this situation, and this is data that is very readily available that your PHA can provide back to you. And so in looking at this slide in terms of the demographics and the housing needs, it looks like this is a, this community has pretty high unemployment and a lot of families on public assistance and under the poverty limit. It also looks like the community has a higher-than-national average of rental property. So that means that maybe you're not wanting to create additional rental property. Although the rental vacancy rate isn't extremely high. So it seems like maybe there's a balance there. But the homelessness rate is very high. So perhaps this is a community that has enough market rate rental property but needs more affordable quality, affordable housing. And perhaps is also not all that inclined towards large multifamily developments. Next slide. And so then in breaking down for this same kind of community, if the PHA is in this community and it has, so we look at this spreadsheet here and it shows that it has 4 million in income. However, 2 million of that is However, 2 million of that is in housing choice funds, which means there isn't much other than the standard HCV program that you can do with that. So your large, you know, your largest source of funds is with your housing choice voucher program, which within that, a large, a large, the largest number of those funds are those subsidy payments directly to landlords. And that's sort of a pass-through, so the housing authority doesn't really get a lot of that. However, and we won't go into detail because that'll be in your recorded session on the housing choice voucher program. But maybe this is a situation where the housing authority wants to project base some of those housing choice voucher funds to use as a way to increase the supply of affordable housing in the community. So that's just, this gives you a picture and then next slide. So then here we gave a scenario of, so based on the housing needs and demographics that we talked about and the resources that we overlooked, what are some of the possible goals and strategies that that housing authority might apply? So perhaps a goal could be expanding the supply of assisted housing. And that could be a strategy for that could be, again, the project-based voucher program that I mentioned, or it could be, it could be creating a pool of contractors to expedite your maintenance and make your vacant units turn faster so that you're filling all of your units, possible units as quickly as possible. So there's sort of, you know, big picture strategies as well as more sort of skirt around the edges. And certainly, your staff should be helping to generate ideas. But we encourage the boards to not, not, you've got a lot of great ideas too. And so you can put some of those into the pool as well. So with that, next slide. With that, we just wanted to touch on strategic planning a little bit and how that can interplay with those two HUD required plans. And we'll open it up for any additional questions that you might deal, you might have. And I will take Mr. Kraft's questions in a moment. But for any of, anybody else, if there's any last, just remaining questions. And if not, we thank you for joining us and hope that you will tap into some of the other modules that are upcoming. Hopefully, you should have received the schedule, comprehensive schedule from either your executive director or your field office. And we love having you join us and seeing names and faces that we've seen before. And when you do log out of this Zoom meeting, you should receive a link that will take you to a satisfaction survey. And we encourage you to complete that because we do tweak, tweak these sessions as we go along based on feedback. So, and let me just make sure. One other question that proceeded earlier was can outside expert assessments be paid for with the capital funds? And yes, so capital needs assessments or physical needs assessments are an allowable and encouraged activity to be paid for out of the capital fund as well as there is, you know, there is the ability to, if you are looking at redevelopment or development to, a development consultant can also be paid for through those funds if it is associated with a specific development idea that you're potentially undertaking. And then, no, I can't seem to scroll down. Okay, there we go. And then Mr. Kraft, you did ask how to deal with the true details of funds such as residents declaring themselves as unemployed. Well, actually, resident income and the certification as to their income and therefore how much rent they should pay is exclusively a staff activity. And that is something that is solely in the realm of staff. What I can say is the board can request monthly to look at the tenant, to receive the number, get the financial number of the amount of tenant accounts receivables, which is basically the measure of how much rent we assumed we should get versus how much rent, how much rent we are receiving. And if you're seeing that, that a lot of folks, that a lot of folks aren't paying their rent, the board can talk to staff and find out, you know, what, what are we doing to mitigate that issue? Not on a personal basis, but on, you know, globally. In terms of, you know, residents declaring themselves as unemployed, staff does go through a rigorous, and actually, the process of validating income has become much more automated. And there are many more ways for staff to determine if they are not being told the truth. And so hopefully that your PHA is utilizing all of those websites and tools for verification and making sure to the greatest extent possible that people are in fact paying the rent that they should be paying. Any other questions?
Margaret, I'd like to make a closing statement, if I might.
Sure.
That what we showed you in a couple of hours is that on paper, there are many lofty goals and lofty processes for planning and deciding how do we do something, anything different than we're doing today? I do want to tell you that the reason I'm still working with PHA, mostly staff to some extent commissioners, is I hope you appreciate the challenge that your staffs face every day trying to live up to all these lofty goals that Congress has enunciated through the years. And then they appropriate a fraction of the money that it really would take to carry that off. So I don't want to be a Debbie Downer. I just want you to appreciate just doing this day-to-day in a fair and accurate and open manner is hard, hard work. And then to move the needle at all towards these loftier aspirations, it can be done. Those are the people that win narrow awards and all that good stuff. But I'm going to tell you, it's hard work and it will take enlightened board members. It will take hard-working staff. And I believe it takes enlightened resident leadership to really get you there. So it's, it can be done, but it's, if it were easy, everybody would be doing it. Everybody would be getting awards, yada, yada. So that, that's my closing statement after 50 years in this business.
All right. Any other questions or anything else? If not, thank you so much for attending and we really appreciate, as Dennis said at the beginning, we really appreciate your service and your volunteering for all of this. And we hope you have a good afternoon.